Okay, ladies and general, members of the Board. We'll now call the meeting of the Ames Community College Board of Trustees to order. Let's all stand and together do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everybody. Next is the approval of the agenda and members, you have before you a copy of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, that motion is carried. Now it's time for public comment. Do we have anybody?
Good afternoon, sir. No comments.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. Again, members, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes of September 5th, a special board meeting, and the minutes of September 20th. I got it backwards, that's a special board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move. Will you approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Carol.
Second it.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, that motion is carried. Representatives to the Board. We start out with Dulce Gonzalez.
Couple announcements. SGA is working with facilities and operations to replace the signage of all current Ames single-stall restrooms, starting on the Greeley campus, to indicate that they are gender-inclusive restrooms. This was recommended, the recommendation of ASAC and the Inclusiveness Council, before last year, and is now being put into action. The reason why this is important is because it is necessary that people of all gender identities and expressions have safe, comfortable places to use the restroom, and this signs will facilitate Ames compliance with Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act, and finally, Ames holds the values of inclusiveness and equity. And this new signage is a direct reflection of those values. The first one will be posted at the unveiling ceremony on October 17th at 2:40 PM in the Ed Beatty Hall, and the rest of the signs will be posted on the following days. I have the sign to show you. SGA was asked to put together a pre-eliminary draft on an expressive activity policy to be reviewed by a small team from the Deans of Students' Office, Cell, and the Campus Safety and Security. The purpose of this policy is to serve as a guideline on how students can exercise their right to freedom of expression while maintaining a safe and productive educational environment at the college. Another, SGA will be holding an SGA Town Hall meeting on October 10th at 2:30 PM in Ed Beatty Theater for students to come and voice their concerns and give their feedback, as well as for SGA to get involved with the student body, and donuts will be provided for the people who come. As you can see on your score calendars, we have all the events. One that I would like to highlight is the Trick or Treat Tree on October 31st from 4:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Perk, because I am excited to announce that for the first time, we are co-sponsoring this event with ASA and CCR. And this is open, because of that, this is open to all Ames employees and their families, so they're also welcome this year.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is the Faculty Association. Francie.
Good afternoon. So, thank you for having me today. So, my name is Francie Rutini, and I'm the other AFA Board of Trustees rep. I think you met Brooke Elsie last month, and so we are here in body and spirit to really share what the faculty are doing in and around campus, and just the great things and the great work that we have been busy with. So, under Presentations, you may already know that we have a program here at Ames called the iFocus Workshop Series, and it's run out of the FYE office, and these are workshops geared for students. A lot of these topics range from study skills, like note-taking and test-taking, to campus resources, and just kind of coping with college in general. But what's so interesting is that this semester, we actually had seven part-time and seven full-time faculty get involved, and they are presenting and facilitating 26 of these workshops. So, there's too many to read off, but I thought I would name a couple of them, because they are quite interesting. So, one was the Text Detective, sleuthing out the main ideas by one of our English faculty. And another workshop that, quite frankly, would have helped me immensely in college, it's called How to Survive Your College-Level Math Class, offered by a few of our math faculty. And then just this morning, we had one of our psychology professors do a workshop called I Forgot to Remember, talking about memory strategies just in time for midterms next week. So, I'm really excited about sharing that, because I feel like it really demonstrates faculty's interest in student success, and not just in the classroom, but outside as well. Under Community Evolvement, Associate CIS Professor Jennifer Bailey and an Ames student, Eden Mug, they are organizers of a Google Developer Group of Northern Colorado, and they teamed up with another Google Developer Group in Boulder to put together an event called Dev Fest. And at this event, they participated in lots of presentations, and several Ames students were there as well. And in your Board Report, there's a link. They put together a cute little video that kind of highlights some of the day's events, so I'd encourage you to check that out. Under Publications, once again, we have our philosophy instructor, Daniel Malloy, who seems to always be publishing, which is excellent, but he recently authored a chapter in a book called Amy Schumer and Philosophy: Brain Wreck. And this book looks at the comedian Amy Schumer and how she is one of a handful of contemporary comedians filling the role of public philosopher. So, again, I provided that link if you'd like to see a little bit more. For Conferences, psychology professor Dr. Shawna Washam attended the National American Psychological Association Conference in San Francisco this past August, and she was really excited to come back and share some of the things that she learned and that was really relevant, applicable to her class. A couple of the sessions that she attended, why students deny that violent video games are negative, have a negative effect upon them, and strategies for reaching the iGen or Internet generation in the classroom. And so, once again, she's really excited to incorporate those pieces into her general psychology, abnormal psychology, and human growth and development classes. And last but not least, we have a program here at Ames called New Faculty Orientation, which is a little near and dear to my heart, because as a new faculty, when I came in, this was a really special experience to be able to be welcomed in so warmly. We had 31 part-time and full-time faculty attend New Faculty Orientation, and seven seasoned instructors actually helped present and do some of the professional development. And I just think that's really exciting to be able to have our seasoned instructors provide knowledge and experience about the Ames campus and the Ames culture, so I think that's a really great program, and we had a success this fall. So, as you can see, we've been quite busy. I'm always impressed with the faculty's ability to both produce quality instruction and have time for all these other things that they've been busy doing and really looking at supporting the institution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is Staff Association. Nan, there she is.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Windsor campus. Good afternoon and welcome to the Windsor campus, my new home. Been here three months. I want to talk about that we hosted a blood drive on September 10th in front of the Allied Health Building, and at the event, there were 18 units of blood that were collected, and this has a potential to impact 36 people in Northern Colorado. Yay! And GARC England will have a donation center at the New Hospital, University Health. And we also staffed a table at the Ames Fair on September 28th. I got my flu shot, so I'm good to go. And we gave out general information to new staff there. We had 13 ripples in recognition, and I would like to highlight the following nominations. The academic advising team at Ames Community College on all four campuses did an amazing job during the month of August. This August, we saw an unprecedented number of new students coming to our campuses. On the Greeley campus alone, academic advisors saw 1,189 students between August 1st and August 24th. This team of individuals always had a welcoming smile and a desire to help students start on their journey at Ames. No matter how long the days were, thank you all so much for your positive attitudes and outstanding dedication. Other staff accomplishments, Jessica Lundstrom in financial aid is completing her Business Technology Certificate here at Ames. Sandy Olson in student enrollment records and testing completed the Business Management AAS Supervisory Management Certificate and Advanced Management Certificate. And I know I'm going to say her last name wrong, so I apologize right now. Melissa Corin Boo in purchasing is currently enrolled in an executive development certificate program through Michigan State University. She has successfully completed two of three required courses to earn the Master's Certificate in Supply Chain Management and Procurement. Her final course starts October 1st, which was Monday, and she will complete this program the end of November. An accounting technician who did not want to be named completed an AA in economics and obtained an accounting certificate. This member also started a BBA majoring in accounting. Do you have any questions?
That's good. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along, President's Report. Dr. Bernstein.
Thank you. We're going to start with our excellence at Ames. I'd like to invite our Dean of Students, Shannon McCaslin, and our excellent student today, Christina Blodgett, who's going to share her story with us.
Let me work some magic here. What a blast this is. Thank you for this opportunity to bring students and their stories to you. Today, as you can see on our screen and here in person, is Christina Blodgett. She's been at Ames since 2015. In 2017, she earned her certificate in medical assisting. She took her classes here on this campus in the first year of it being open. In May of 2019, she's also going to graduate with her AA degree and a 4.0 GPA, I might add. She's worked as a medical assistant in the NCMC Pulmonary Clinic for one year since getting her certificate. In 12 short months, she has twice been selected as the Employee of the Month from all specialty areas throughout the Banner Health System, and I hear she's got a surprise awaiting from her supervisor next week. We think she might be getting the third Employee of the Month. In addition, she's been nominated for the highly coveted Heart Award by her patients. This is one that is highly coveted for folks who work in healthcare. She's married, has five kiddos, ages 6 to 18. Her story of finding her way to college is remarkable, and I thought you'd want to hear it. So, let's hear from Christina.
First and foremost, I want to thank everyone here for giving me the time today to give my experience at Ames. I'm a first-generation college student. I came from teen parents and lost my father when I was under a year old. I am one of three children, and the oldest. Being the oldest, I grew up a lot faster than most would. The lifestyle I grew up in was one that no child should have to live, with drugs and alcohol being the main focus. Taking care of my siblings was always my top priority. It didn't take long for me to fall into the same patterns that I was all too familiar with and ended up pregnant with my first child at the age of 17. Honestly, having my first born was life-saving for me and ultimately knew that I was going to be the best mom possible. Fast forward many years, I'm now married with five children. My oldest is my stepdaughter, Jaylen, who's 18. My son Xavier, 13. Shaden is 11. Ayanna is 7, and my baby, who is now 6, Raylen. Because childcare for my children was taking over half of each paycheck, we decided it would be best if I stayed home with the kids. I did this for four and a half years, and finally, all of my children were in some sort of schooling. With a few hours to myself a day now, I decided it was time to do something for me. I've always been interested in the medical field, but never thought that a teen mom from a household where the talk of college was a joke would be able to fathom the thought of returning to school at the age of 28. As I researched Ames, I was terrified, but really wanted to give it a shot. In 2015, I decided that I wanted to start my prereqs for Rad Tech. Going into that first class, I thought for sure I was going to pass out or run out and never come back, but instead, I made it a whole, I made it the whole time, and the experience was a feeling that I've never experienced before. I was excited and engaged, and I felt welcome. I went from being the bottom of my class in high school to maintaining a 4.0 GPA. Moving forward, it was finally time to apply for the radiology program. I was terrified and stressed, and I waited months for the results to come in. When they finally did, I was devastated. I had not gotten in, and it was actually towards the bottom of the rankings. I was defeated and thought I was never going to be fully, going to get fully the fulfillment of accomplishing my goals. After a conversation with my advisor, I realized that feeling sorry for yourself wasn't going to get you anywhere. I retook a bio class that I had gotten a C in and decided to gain the experience and join the MA class. After the first week, I knew I was where I belonged and fell in love with the patient care that a medical assistant was able to provide. I graduated in the summer of 17 with a certificate of medical assisting. I'm now a certified medical assistant with Banner Health. My patients love me just as much as I love them, and every day is a new adventure. If it wasn't for Ames, I would have never gotten the confidence to achieve the many things I've done in the last three years. With encouragement from all my allied health advisors, my amazing instructors, the leaders from my trio program, my mentors and catalysts, the experience of the National Society of Leadership and Success, as well as my experience of getting back into the work field by being an Ames ambassador, I don't feel like I am a failure. I feel strong and like nothing can stand in my way. Today, I work full-time, raise five children, and go to school to finish up my liberal arts degree. With one class left next semester, it's bittersweet. I will have finished and on top of that, but it is an ending to a new chapter that I don't want to end. Trying to think of the future without all these amazing people at the school pushing me through is terrifying, but I know because of all the skills and knowledge that I've gained over the years that I will be okay. I am forever thankful that I was accepted by so many, that being a non-traditional college student, I was welcomed with open arms and never felt that I was less than. I don't know what my future may hold, perhaps nursing, or a thought of possible nurse practitioner in school, but regardless of what I do, because of Ames, I know that I will succeed in everything I put my mind to. Thank you.
There's a story.
Wait. Christine.
That story.
And this is why we do what we do.
Are you free November 1st for breakfast?
So, just take that in for a minute. Yeah, there's some, pass some tissues around, there's some people. I actually think this is a great way to start the President's Report, just to remind us why we are all doing what we do, not only those of us who are employed, but certainly those of us in elected positions, and why we make the tough decisions we make, sometimes the easy decisions we make, but that's why.
That's right.
So, Dr. Rothmar, how are you going to match that?
Yeah, good luck.
I'd like to bring up Dr. Rothmar, our Executive Vice President, to give us a few highlights and to offer a report on our core measures.
Thank you, Dr. Bernstein, Chair Peterson, members of the Board. Yeah, so I get to follow a powerful and uplifting story with numbers, so you're welcome. If I could turn your attention to the Core Measures document that was in your packet, this relates to Strategy 2, Enhance Operational Performance, Objective 2.1 Data Analytics, and Line 28, and these are in the strategic plan, Develop the Leading and Lagging Indicators, Benchmarks, and Targets Related to the Core Measures. Okay, we'll just see it.
Page 38.
Okay. We're getting up to speed here. Nope, thank you.
All right. To highlight a few of these numbers, I want to share with you in the first upper left-hand corner where you see 8436, those are the number of students for the academic year 2017-2018, which encompasses summer 2017, fall 2017, and spring 2018. What I want to share with you about that particular number, that is the highest head count Ames Community Colleges has had since 2009-2010, so certainly seeing some increases, and we'll go into those briefly a little bit later as well. It also is the highest FTE, Full-Time Student Equivalent, since 2011-2012 with 3,660. And as you look across the Core Measures document, there was, our degrees and certificates awarded remain flat in terms of percentage increase, so you'll see that there was over 1,852. Our number of students, our demographics, we have 58% of our students are female, 42% are male. One of the other things I wanted to share, and where this really comes into play a lot for our partners and student services, when you think about the students that we serve, this fall, 35% of our students are full-time, 65% of our students, so we have a lot more students taking fewer credits, and as you know from our strategic plan, we do have initiatives in place to try to get students to take more credits, because that helps with their persistence retention, then ultimately their graduation as well. So, a couple of the numbers going across the bottom with the benchmarks and current performance and the core measures, just to refresh your memory, we look at access, retention, learning, completion, and impact. And when you look at access and retention, you'll see both of those numbers from the benchmarks to the current performance that we've seen, a 12% increase, percentage increase in the annual unduplicated head count, which again reflects that 8436 and being one of the highest in several years. Our fall-to-fall retention rate is up 2%, and again, that's the important piece of making sure we provide students those services and experiences to allow them to complete whatever their intention is. I do want to take a minute to highlight for you that middle column around the learning outcomes and to mention to you as a reminder, because it's one of the things as I've been learning more about Ames and in particular our academic teams, that the benchmark that you see listed here are not actually the benchmarks as of yet. These were just established in 2015, so it's really the first reading. When you look across the other benchmarks for access, retention, completion, those are three-year averages. We have not yet, as of yet, had three years of data to do a three-year average. So, when you see those common learning outcomes and where we were from that first year in 2015 to when it was last measured, and in particular, two of them that I thought you'd probably might have questions on for the oral communications, you see it was over 80% when it was first measured and then dropped down to just over 70%. And then, when you look at professionalism, it started off low at 34%, and then you see a dramatic increase, the 84%. So, one of the things in trying to identify and why these are so important to take a look at, it really helps our assessment teams and our faculty to know for those core learning outcomes, how our students are doing, they have rubrics in place, they measure kind of where the students that are arrived or arriving at those particular aspects. So, in gathering this data, what our communications team, primarily around Communications 115, which is speech communication, they looked at the rubric area of delivery in two specific areas, the timeframe, like if you're given a speech, if it's supposed to be a two-minute speech, are you finishing in 30 seconds or are you finishing in 10 minutes? So, in kind of where you're falling within that rubric. Or is it really the eye contact? So, as you're a nervous public speaker like I am, are you up here, you know, just reading your documents, or are you engaging with the audience and participating? So, by analyzing this data as an assessment team, instructors are really able to hone in and help the students ensure that they're meeting those specific learning outcomes. Then, as you look at the graduation rate, you'll see that it has stayed flat, and our transfer rate has decreased slightly from the three-year average. And if I can put a little teaser out there for your next meeting, I want to share with you some work that's being done with teams at Ames Community College and the University of Northern Colorado in helping to do some seamless transitions to help those numbers and our students realize their opportunities beyond Ames, whether it's employment or continuing for their four-year degree. Then, my last piece about the core measures that I want to highlight for you, because you'll see that last column is from fiscal year 2015-2016, so while that's old data, we're currently analyzing whether or not we should engage MC again and how we might want to measure our economic impact for Northern Colorado. So, those are the core measures I wanted to highlight for you this afternoon. And then, one other quick piece that's outside of this, that I believe it came up last month that you were asking about, is Dr. Kish had shared our current enrollment, so I'll give you a brief update on where we stand today compared to where we were last year at this time. We're up 4.3%, and there was also a question regarding concurrent enrollment, and what I want to share with you about our concurrent enrollment is, as you've seen, our overall enrollment continues to grow, as does our concurrent high school student enrollment. So, in terms of the total student body, concurrent high school enrollment makes up nearly 27% of our population, meaning head count, and 17.5% of our full-time equivalent student number of credit hours. And just to give you a comparison, from where we were last year to this year, that's a 21% increase in head count and a 29% increase in those numbers for student FTE. Yes?
Is most, is most of the concurrent enrollment increased, or what, a significant part of that, because we're adding another grade at the early college academy, or is it broader than that?
It's really across the board, and I should note, and I appreciate the clarification question, that the concurrent enrollment that these reports reflect are classes that are being taken at the high school, as well as courses that are being taken at one of the Ames Community College campuses as well.
Okay.
And we can certainly come back at another time with those numbers broken out more if you want to get into additional detail.
Another question, is our concurrent enrollment programs or classes starting to compete with the AP and the IB programs at the surrounding high schools slightly, or is there a pro and con to that, or do you follow me on that question?
I do. I don't have that specific answer of how our partners would answer that question. From previous experience, there's always a push-pull for AP classes and dual-credit classes and what the institution finds, but that is one of the areas, I can go back to our teams and see what kind of feedback that we're getting and partnering with.
Or if we're creating a conflict.
No, those are great questions, and it kind of depends on the culture of the institution and what they're striving for, and how we best serve our students and families and community members.
Is it true some of their coursework doesn't always transfer in the AP and the IB programs where ours would if it was?
It varies by the receiving institution.
Okay. Great. I mean, in the long term, or short term possibly, are those numbers going to be more problematic for us, or is this something that is relatively easy for us to handle as long as we have the instructional staff?
Yes. For both.
I answered my own question.
It is a phenomenal opportunity we have, and going on if it becomes problematic, problematic for instructors, or in terms of getting instructors, those are for instructors, or in terms of getting instructors, those are hurdles we need to overcome, because that'll just provide additional opportunities for us to not only serve that population, but for them to come to Ames, or to further their education for the workforce, or where they choose to go. So, it's a good problem to have, should we encounter it.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
So, Dr. Rothmar is gonna stay at the podium, because now he's putting on his interim Vice President for Academic Affairs hat, and gonna give some highlights from that department, and a presentation on open educational resources.
Yep, and the presentation on open educational resources, I'm going to introduce our Associate Vice President, Dr. Strauss, but before I do that, I wanted to share one quick note with you, and recognize our Dean of Business and Technology, Jeff Smith, as well as the other Ames teams, because last week, Ames Community College, through their Dean Smith's work, hosted the Colorado Workforce Development Council, and they held their quarterly meeting here in the FNO showroom last Thursday and Friday. The council is made up of many state agencies, elected officials, and industry partners across Colorado. And let me just share with you real quick, the Colorado Workforce Development Council's mission to give you a perspective of why that's so important, that A, they recognize the talent and the efforts that are happening here at Ames, and why they would come here for this particular meeting. So, their mission is to facilitate the creation and sustainability of a business-led Colorado talent development system that appropriately integrates the work of economic development, education, training, and workforce development, to meet the needs of businesses, workers, job seekers, and students. So, again, our missions very much align, and they really did want to come here because of the great work that is happening, as well as the teams that we have here that support events such as that. So, I do want to throw out the kudos to Jeff and those teams for hosting that event, and provide that recognition to Ames for that piece. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Dr. Strauss to do the next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. This is in your packet, following the information that was just presented? Okay, thank you. Well, members of the board, Dr. Bernstein, it is a pleasure to be in front of you today and share a little bit of information about one of our strategic initiatives that is in the strategic plan. It is Line 5. The strategy is to empower students to succeed, which is up here on the PowerPoint slide. The tactic is actually the third box here, to reduce barriers to learning resources, and the activity is to promote open educational resources. One of the main reasons why students are not successful in any college is because they don't purchase textbooks. There's another whole angle about reading the textbooks, but you have to purchase the textbooks to even read them. And statistically nationwide, about 35% of students never purchased a textbook for their classes. Sometimes they find other ways, whether they borrow or share textbooks from their fellow peers, whether they use services that they can receive at the library, but many students are behind the eight ball from the get-go. And 66% of students don't have textbooks in hand from day one, largely because of the cost of textbooks. And I think we all know that the cost of textbooks continues to increase, and what we're very excited to share with you today is the initiative for Free to Students. That's what we are calling the F2S, Free to Students. And what you'll see here is that the Free to Students is teaching and learning resources that are freely available to students, but also to the educators. Educators have to make decisions all the time about what books they want their students to purchase. And certainly, the majority of our educators are looking at how they can perhaps reduce the cost for our students, and a little bit later, I'll tell you about how much money is being saved this coming spring by a whole area moving towards open educational resources. What you see on this slide, on the right-hand side, is that there's a number of ways that both students as well as faculty have these resources available to them, to save them money, and also provide more resources that they may not have with just a textbook. So, you can see that there's library-licensed content, there's reserved textbooks, OER, which I'm gonna talk a little bit about in a little bit later. There's a lot of electronic resources, laptops, iPads, eBooks. These are all available to our students through the library and through other sources that we have. These are some of the benefits that we believe are really key to help students be successful in their classes. Universal access, that any student can have access to the resources, not just the books, but supplemental resources as well, if they have no cost. Students can be ready for class day one. As I mentioned, so many students delay the purchase of their textbooks, if they get them at all, until their financial aid comes in, or until they feel like, I have to purchase this book. The cost savings is astronomical, I'll present some data in just a minute. One of the things that lots of faculty ask is, well, what about success? And there's a study that I'll show you on the next slide. This is a study that came from the Florida School District, both two- and four-year schools. 21,000 students were a part of this study. And what you can see here is that students do tend to perform better with courses that use OER. One of the things that some faculty will say is, well, getting OER is a challenge, and how do I know that the resources that are out there that are free are as good as the publisher's material? Now, there is research that's demonstrating, in fact, that is the case. And this large study, again, 21,000 students, did show that OER materials led to, and this is a correlational study, not a causation, but to higher grades of A and B minuses for all students in courses that used OER. Conversely, a significant decrease in DW, excuse me, DF and W grades in courses with OER, especially for students who are eligible for financial aid and low socioeconomic backgrounds. So, there's more and more data coming out now that's saying it's not just about cost, but it's also about student success. Currently, these are some of the courses, there may be more, we're not sure we have all of the data, but these are some of the courses that are using this F2S or OER model. So, AAA, English, Education, Geology, Literature, Mathematics, Philosophy. One of the things I want to point out here is that there's really no limit to what courses can't have access to OER. There are networks now, the one that we're involved with is out of Minnesota, and that network allows faculty to find materials, primarily textbooks, that are edited or authored by professors, the same individuals who are putting the books out there from publishers. So, they're really the same individuals, it's just that they're free. And another advantage is, if I would choose a particular textbook that's free, I can also alter that textbook. If I don't like a particular chapter that somebody wrote, I can write my own chapter, I can find another chapter in another free source and put it right into my materials. So, it's really limitless of what you can do. It does take time. One of the things we're very proud of, and part of our team that's working on this initiative, is we have instructional designers, and we have our library staff that are able to provide the support, so it's not just having the faculty have to do all the legwork, that we can support them with a lot of this legwork to help them find the resources. I do want to point out also on this slide, and actually, I have an update in data that Dean Reichel and his Department Chair, Evan, provided me, that this next spring semester, the English 121 and English 131, they are going not exclusively OER, but primarily OER, and it's gonna save students for all of the sections, and, do you know the number of sections, Scott? About 20 sections. It's gonna save students $85,000 for these two courses. So, you can imagine, if we're able to extend this to other courses, which we are doing slowly, but surely, that we can really continue to help our students by removing this barrier.
Excuse me, how many students are in those 20 sections, roughly?
Oh, gosh, I'm gonna turn to Scott again, he probably...
About 20 to over section, 20 to 25 sections.
So, what, 500?
Yeah, and actually, I think Evan might have said a little bit more, but it's roughly in that area.
That's $1,000 per student.
Um, no, I think it was about 125 is what he shared, per the textbook. Yeah, and I'm not sure exactly of the numbers, unfortunately, I don't have those with me. But I do think it was actually more sections than Scott was sharing.
While we're on that kind of comparison, do books cost, you know, if our tuition's $2,000 a year, books are costing probably what?
Well, it depends on the class, it depends on the book, it also depends on whether students are renting the book, whether they are buying the book from Amazon, whether they're getting it from our bookstore, there's a lot of different factors, whether they're getting a used book or a new book. But all of these different factors, they do add up, and I have a slide here that's very interesting. When we solicited feedback from students about what they would do if they were able to save money, you'll be very interested to see the little wordle that they put together.
Thank you.
And here it is. So, we asked students, what would you do with the additional money saved from not having to buy textbooks? And I don't know if you know how these work, but these are the biggest words, if you will, the largest words are the ones that they answered the most. So, diapers was the number-one thing that students said that they would be able to purchase. Now, that tells us certainly a little bit about our students as well, but food, bills, the kids, the car, rent is certainly right up their gas. These are all the things that if students had more money, how they would utilize those funds. So, we, Jim Hutchinson worked with Greg and Deb to put together a video that our faculty actually put little snippets together, and it's 2 minutes and 46 seconds. We cut it down from six minutes to four minutes to 2 minutes and 46 seconds. So, let me play this wonderful video.
What we're really hoping to encourage among faculty is to seek out open content. I learned about OERs from the Office of Online Learning with Jim Hutchinson, and also the librarian Susan Anderson. When Ames joined the Open Textbook Network last year, I looked more into their resources, and I found it was a really good fit for my class.
I started using OER because of the cost of textbooks for students. I was looking for an alternative that would give them a much more affordable way to take the class.
For the student, it's a huge class savings. I think my students were able to save about $170 each for this particular course. And they have access to a textbook that they can download to an e-reader, they can download it to their computer, they don't have to lug around a physical textbook. For me, there was an advantage in allowing me a kind of a creative license for the course. I felt more like I was putting my own touch on the course, curating the materials.
I was afraid the material might be thrown together haphazard, that it might not be quality material, that it might not cover the things that I needed to cover based on the CCCNS objectives and learning outcomes, but after reviewing the materials, it was pretty easy to sort through and find that it was gonna cover that for me.
The class that I am using OERs in for the first time usually has nine to 15 people. It's usually a class that is hard to make. This semester, when I used OERs for the first time, I advertised that all over campus, and so anyone who saw my posters knew that I was using a free textbook. That class had an overload of students for the first time ever.
What we've seen with the cost of books, the way those have gone up, I think this is an awesome response to that.
This is not just a trend, this is going to be huge in education.
The future really is open, and so our focus is to raise consciousness among faculty and students that open resources are of a high quality, and it really is, you know, the future of education, that we share what we know, we share it openly, and we don't privatize information.
So, that concludes the video. I was told I need to let this kind of run its course for 10 seconds, but the last and final slide is just to see if you have any questions that I might be able to answer for you.
Awesome, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Rothmar, do you have any additional highlights from Academic Affairs? No, okay, thank you. Next is Chuck Jensen, our Vice President for Administrative Services, who would like to give us some highlights from Administrative Services and our monthly budget update. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Dr. Bernstein. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll start off my report with our monthly budget report you have before you. This is for two months of our fiscal year, ending August 31st. A couple of highlights for you. Our tuition revenue continues to come in strong. We had projected an upturn in our tuition, and it's materializing, so tuition revenue is strong and on target. Our fees and other charges are continuing to come in strong due to the strength of our aviation program. The bulk of those fees are coming from our aviation program, so enrollment increase in our aviation, you'll see increases in our fee revenue. In both our general property taxes and our state appropriations, that's all due to timing, why we don't have very much reported right now. We fully anticipate those to come in at 100%, or more perhaps, in our general property taxes as the fiscal year transpires. The other item I wanted to highlight, and I'll probably highlight this every month, is on our other revenue category. You'll see that we've exceeded our budget by 493% amount collected, and that has to do with our oil royalties. And so, every month, you're gonna see that number increasing. I'll take a stab saying that that's probably gonna exceed 2 million this year. I mean, I'm not an oil man, but I think we're gonna see continued growth, of course, in our oil royalties throughout the year, so that'll always be a fun part to talk about at every board meeting, is what the oil royalties have been for the month. So, again, very strong on our revenue side. On our expenditure side, I don't have any concerns to highlight to the board. We continue to be tracking as budgeted, and so I don't have any concerns there to bring to the board's attention. So, that is my summary of the report for the end of August. If there's any questions? Nope. Very good. A couple of highlights from the division. Of course, I want to do a little bragging first. We just recently had our auditors on campus, and they have left. Amen. And all indications are that clean audit. We were not made aware of any issues from our auditors, both in our college audit and our foundation audit. Those reports will be coming to you in subsequent board meetings as those audits reported, or as those audits are finalized, but I just wanted to brag a little bit about that. And I also wanted to... And I also wanted to note that we also had our annual work comp audit. And out of a $30 million in gross payroll, we had a $524 adjustment, which is a remarkable, according to the work comp auditors, that's a remarkable feat for a college to have that. And I want to shout out to Darla Underhill and Linda Sample in our payroll department for that work well done in that arena. So, yes. As we get into the November board meeting, we'll have a work session at the next meeting for budget assumptions. That's the start of our budget process. We're beginning that process on campus now with our departments. And we'll come to you at the November work session with the first look at our fiscal year '20 budget. A couple other highlights from the department, from the division. In facilities, we're getting close to finalizing the Greeley campus entrance. We're going to be seeing irrigation and landscaping coming in, hopefully before the snow flies. And so that's turned out to be a very successful project. A lot of positive comments on the monuments and the entrances to campus. I think we've all been very pleased at how they turned out. I also want to give a shout out to Mike and his operation. Ames will be hosting tours of multiple buildings at the request of the Society for College and University Planning, who are holding their Pacific Conference at the University of Colorado. They've sought us out to come and tour facilities that we've built. So as Dr. Rothmeyer was pointing out, a proud point for his division as far as people seeking out Ames for our input and our expertise, I just wanted to mention that also, that others are seeking out our facilities even too. Also within our IT department, progress is being made, which is very exciting, towards our new data center. This will be a transforming part for our campus of taking our, what I consider a very outdated data center and turning it into a high-tech data center that'll serve us for many, many years. And I think that's all the bragging at this point. Any questions on any of that? It's been a very exciting time.
The monuments on 47th are awesome.
They look nice, don't they?
Yes.
And we're in the process of...
Drove through that today and it's just, they're gorgeous.
We're in the process of finalizing the fiber connections to all those monuments, so we'll light them up soon with data on those big LED boards.
Cool.
So, thank you.
Great reporting.
Thank you Chuck. I would like to introduce you to our new Vice President for Community and College Relations, Timothy Ullman, who today is giving his first CCR report.
It's wonderful. I'm going to tilt it up just a hair, maybe.
You might need to move it up a little bit.
Great to be here, finally. Got here on the 10th of September and it's wonderfully part of the Ames team. And got great people to work with and just wonderful situation to walk into, couldn't be more pleased. So look forward just to making a real contribution here as well. A couple of highlights for you. As you know, on September 22nd, we had the great Art Park Embark. We had eight balloons and everybody had a good time, although it was early in the morning and a little chilly. So my Alabama blood is getting used to this weather here. But they figured out we had over 700 people at that event, which was up significantly from last year. So it's just fantastic. So we're already looking at how to make this an even bigger, broader event next year. Last Friday, some of you were at the mural unveiling at the Rodarte Center, which was just spectacular. And I want to thank Dr. Weissgaver and her team for the work that was done there, and especially Dr. Mario Gonzalez, as he coordinated all the efforts there. And it was just a wonderful event. If you've not had a chance to go take a look at it, I'd really encourage you to do that. It's just spectacular. Especially as you get up close to it and look at it, looks one way from the street, looks another way when you get up close. It's just excellent. So wonderful gift to the community there. And, you know, it features, again, one of our Greeley artists here, Armando Silva. And kind of sticking with an art theme is the Loveland Campus. And on October the 12th, they're hosting an art opening for, let me get the name right here, Dr. Andrew Sfedlow, who's also an artist from Greeley. So they'll be having that as well. Looking forward to it. And then to highlight one of our own, Mary Gabriel, here at the Windsor Campus. She's receiving the Windsor Chamber of Commerce Shining Star Award. And that'll happen on the 18th of this month at an award banquet. And this annual award is given for exemplary community involvement, innovation, and for the betterment of the Windsor community. So we are very pleased. So that's just fantastic. We do have one brief presentation here from our Executive Director for the Foundation. Kelly Jackson's going to come up, if you would please, Kelly.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Bornstein. I come forward today to present to you the College Promise Program, Future Forward, that the foundation has been working on for the last nine months. This scholarship program is for all students within the Ames service area. We wanted to be inclusive and include the entire area that we serve within Northern Colorado, so it's a little bit different than what you've heard in the past. This is a last dollar in program after all considerations for financial aid have been vetted through the Financial Aid Office and have been calculated and received. So anything that the student may bring with them, whether that's FAFSA federal-related or maybe community-related, all gets calculated into their entire pot of money, basically. And then the College Promise Program would kick in after that. Support considers cost of attendance for calculations, which is set federally as to what those costs are to attend college. That includes things such as daycare, transportation, housing, utilities, that entire bubble that you saw Dr. Strauss present are all part of the consideration of the cost of attendance at Ames or any college. So when they are calculating what the need may be for College Promise, those are all considered. That is closely worked through the Financial Aid Office with Nancy Gray. We want to make sure that anything we come up with as an idea can be instituted and pushed forth through the Financial Aid Office. It must be reality. Students must complete a FAFSA. However, we are reaching out to the entire Weld County undocumented and non-traditional students as well as anyone that wants to come to Ames. So regardless of their situation, they will be able to qualify for College Promise Funds. Students will be required to demonstrate satisfactory progress towards a degree or certificate completion. We are not going to fund permanent students. There is some accountability to go with this program, which as we reach out to our community, they will greatly appreciate. Recruiting will focus on underrepresented and non-traditional groups, but it will meet all of the needs within our community. The fundraising will focus on that. We are targeting those groups as in Strategy 1, Objective 1. So we are looking forward to meeting that goal. Projections, money. How do we reach out to our community and what does it look like? Scholarships of $800 to $1,500 per student is what Financial Aid typically sees as a need. So the foundation executive committee has done some calculations and determined that that's the range that we most likely need to support. With that, if we had a fund of $100,000, we could support 66 to 125 students per year. The goal is to create a fund annually of $1 million that can support 665 to 1,250 students. Yes, that's a lofty goal. It's exciting to me to be able to look forward to the future and propel our students and our community to a new day. Any questions?
How big a fund would you need if you were living off, if it were an endowment and you were just living off the proceeds of the...
If you calculate 3%, you would probably need somewhere around $35 million.
Okay.
In order to support an annual 1 million.
Okay.
And one of your projections is scholarships of $800 to $1,500 per student?
Per student.
Across the board?
Across the board. It would be for those that are applying for College Promise funding. So if they do not have a need, then they would not apply. But if they are applying for additional support, we would give that consideration and look at what their unmet need is. And that's vetted through the Financial Aid Office.
Kelly, do you want to just mention what your next steps are?
Absolutely.
I wanted to present to the board before you went out publicly.
Yes. So the executive committee has worked over the last nine months to come up with all of this criteria and to come up with our projections for support, as well as is it really feasible? Part of what we want to do after speaking and presenting to the trustees today is to take this out to our community, knowing that our community has other funding opportunities that they've been working on, to ensure that the community understands that we are very fortunate to be in a position to provide these types of opportunities within our community and our service area. This is in no way a competition to any other programs, and we would like our community to understand that. Once we do some focus groups with various targeted groups in our community that have an interest in education and support of this type of program, we will then work with all of our marketing materials and development of timelines, and then we will go live. My hopes is that we could do that before the end of the year.
Kelly, what's your biggest challenge?
The biggest challenge is going to be uncovering those who will be our biggest supporters. So if anyone has any contacts, I say that lightly, any interests or any possibilities, I am always happy to meet with you to discuss who those are.
So we have a breakfast dinner coming up.
We do.
How many are invited to that so far today?
The November 1 breakfast is open to seating for 300. And so that is a fundraising support of scholarship development. It is not going to be an announcement of the College Promise Program because we have not done the focus groups yet. So it will be leading towards that with the Propel the Future branding, which is then going to marry with the Future Forward branding of the College Promise Program.
So that will become College Promises?
It will funnel towards that, yes.
Yes, okay.
Other questions?
Oh, my question is how many people, you have 300 that you've invited or...
We have invited more than 300.
You have invited...
We always invite over so we can then fill fully.
Okay.
If you have individuals you would like to invite, if you would like to invite yourself and others, we are glad to fill tables for you.
Okay.
Other questions, Carol?
Is there any money left from the previous College Promise Program?
There are funds available that are still in holding by the foundation. There are additional funds that were raised as building capital campaign funds too that we are working through.
Okay. So the original College Promise Program is in a changed state?
It is in a rebranded state, correct.
Okay. And just bring me up to speed, why is that?
It was requested by the major funders of the previous program. They wanted to see a greater program, they wanted to see more impact in our community so that we could better engage those who want to support it.
Those are private donors then?
Those are private donors, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in order to qualify for this, must you have exhausted other or applied for all other means first?
It will be recommended that you apply for all opportunities available, and that will be guided through the Financial Aid Office. And once those are all exhausted, and if there is still an unmet need, then the College Promise Program will be encouraged for application.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great job, thank you. Timothy, were there any other highlights from CCR that you want to tell? Okay, thank you. I would like to invite Dr. Sarah Weissgaver, Vice President for Student Engagement, Inclusion and Success. She's got three strategy updates for us.
Two. Yeah, two and then another very exciting thing I'd like to share with you. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Dr. Bornstein. Excuse me. I, in listening to my colleagues and thinking about all of the work that's been happening as we move forward, I'm sitting kind of in awe of both our colleagues and our students. This is midterm month for our students, and so you saw throughout the score calendar, there was a balance of ways for students to de-stress and also ways for students to study harder. And so I just appreciate the hard work from the students as well as our colleagues because everyone is moving fast and moving forward at a pretty strong clip. Not least of which is our folks in our Transition Center, who piloted for the first year an in-person student orientation. So you'll see a couple pages in your board packet. It's called Arti's Orientation Pilot Preliminary Outcomes Fall 2018. This, the purpose of Arti's Orientation was to support the academic and social transition of students into the Ames community. Many years ago, Ames had an in-person orientation program, and due to attendance, we moved to an online orientation program. With the You Belong Initiative under Strategy 1, Objective 1.1, so that's access, Line 1, first line in the strategic plan under You Belong, we have Arti's Orientation. We had this year, due to our Director Rachel Vareto's leadership, along with Assistant Vice President of SACE Division Libby Clingsmith, over 300 students participate in our very first out-of-the-gate Arti's Orientation. That's very, very exciting. You can see in your packet that we had three orientation objectives. One was to build a sense of belonging and pride in Ames. Two was to connect students to their on-campus support network of peers, staff, faculty and campus resources. And third was to support parents, partners, guardians and childrens, as well as the student. Of our outcomes, we were measuring whether or not students made a connection with one another, with another peer or an employee. And we had that 71% of participants reported that they did in fact feel a stronger connection. We also were working to understand if students could identify at least one campus resource they would access within their first six weeks at Ames. 97% of the participants indicated they knew how to access a resource based on their engagement and orientation. And the third outcome was to increase their preparedness for the first day of class. 98% of respondents said they felt more prepared the first day a week of classes at Ames. So those were all done, those data were collected as we completed orientation, and we've just added, or we've just collected some additional data at the end of September to see, okay, did this really work? How well did this work? What we found from a survey administered at the end of September was that advising, food services, fall-in and student study spaces are the most frequented resources that students have utilized and have pointed back to their experience at orientation. I'll share one quote with you before I conclude this brief presentation on Arti's Orientation. And a student said, "Attending orientation gave me an idea of how the school felt like a community. I was terrified of starting school and it helped me get comfortable and eased my worries." And I think that's exactly what we're looking for in this idea of You Belong, is for students, their very first experience on campus to feel like they belong here, to see their anxiety go away a little bit and to have some preparedness as they move forward. We'll continue moving forward with Arti's Orientation. We'll have another round that we'll move forward to in spring. And we look to be fully institutionalized by summer of 2019. And you all know, it's my favorite thing to do to be, to give gifts to the board. So you notice that you had a little red bag on your chair, and I wanted you all to have the opportunity to experience what it was like to be a student at Arti's Orientation. And so everything you have in this bag are items that students also receive during orientation. So you all now have that. I will share with you that there's a red shirt or a black shirt that says Be Remarkable. I will share with you that there's a red shirt, or a black shirt, that says Be Remarkable. If you don't like the color you were given in your bag, I have some extras for you. I also wanted, oh, and look at that trustee hat, I like the way you represent. [laughing] Absolutely, absolutely.
Over the belly.
Oh dear, oh dear. Man down.
Now it's gone.
I also wanted to bring your attention to- [laughing] Trustee Oxiger, I love it, I love it. This is, this is perfect, and really does show how exciting it is.
We don't get paid a lot, so we get these things.
I know, I know trustee Ruckel was very excited about the socks that we have. I also wanted to share with you this little coloring book, Arti's Great Adventure, and it's brought to you by the Transition Center, but as you open it up, one of our Ames graduates actually drew all of the pictures in this book. He works in the FYE office as a super peer coach, I can't remember his exact title off the top of my head, but he helps lead our peer coaching programs, and he actually drew this, so I wanted to share that with you and help you all feel right at home as we think about what it means for our students to get oriented at Ames.
Thank you.
Next up is something I'm very, very excited to share with you about Dulce. I have, I have gifts coming out my ears up here, I'll tell you what, hang on. Okay, I'd like to update you on Strategy 1, Objective 1.3, which is diverse populations, Line 13. And this is a very exciting tactic that we've been working on, and it's the Center for Diversity and Inclusion. The reason I feel this is so exciting in that my time at Ames, I think I started Ames as a student here in 2003, and have worked here in various capacities since. I will share with you that this is the first time I've seen Ames embrace our amazingly diverse student population in this way, since I have known about Ames. And so I'm so excited and very thankful to the board, specifically for the inclusion of diverse populations in our mission statement, because I really believe that statement drove us to this tactic. So the Center for Diversity and Inclusion strives to create an intentional diverse community of students, serving as a hub to amplify the voices and enhance the student experience for marginalized communities. This is an intersectional center, so some college campuses have cultural centers that are unique to various cultural identities. So you might have a women's resource center, or you might have an African-American resource center. Ames is on the forward edge, in that we created an intersectional center where we're really going to be working with students around the way their identities come together. We will still be focusing on some of what we call the Big Eight, social identities, which include socioeconomic class status, race, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, LGBTQ status, spirituality, age, and ability. But we're really going to be looking at how those identities come together. Within the CDI, is what we're calling it for short, there will be several unique spaces for students to engage in. We'll have a meditation and prayer room for students of various spirituality. We will also have a new mothers' room for new moms that really want to be on campus and need to be able to support their kiddo at home as well. We will also have a computer and study area, a student meeting and lounge space, and there will also be a veterans' engagement area. And so this will be located right across from Dr. Rothmer's office in Ed Beatty Hall, and I am super excited to share with you that our grand opening, it is on your board calendar, is October 30th at 11 o'clock. We will be doing a ribbon cutting, and that coincides with our first kickoff event, which is to celebrate the Dia de los Muertos event, where we'll have a spoken word artist come join us in the Ed Beatty Theater and do some spoken word around ancestry and family. So really excited to share that event with you. Before I transition to my next topic that I'd like to share with all of you, I'd like to see if there's any questions at this point on the two strategic tactics that I've shared with you in our progress.
Any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Well, at this time then, I'd like to invite-
Still getting used to the shirt, you know?
It looks great. At this time, I'd like to invite Vest, previous Vest student, Ames alumna Jennifer Greener, Dean Abernathy, and John DeChant up to share with you a little bit about the work they have done and proposal they have for you regarding an Ames flag.
Oh, yes. This is-
Thank you, Dr. Weisgaver. Good afternoon, I am Jennifer Greener, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to discuss our Ames flag proposal. But first, I'd like to recognize our Ames advisors, and my fellow Vest Club members, who are not with us today because they are supporting a local breast cancer awareness event. As you may already know, Vest is responsible for the flag poles outside the outdoor classroom on the Greeley Campus. Last year, we decided we wanted to do two projects. One was, we needed to bring our flags into regulation for the side that's flag poles. This was accomplished on Flag Day this year. The second is, we wanted to create an Ames flag. This would be flown on the Colorado flag pole beneath the Colorado flag. There are a number of reasons that we felt an Ames flag would be appropriate. One is pride. We are so proud of where we go to school. We are proud of the certificates and degrees that we earn here. I am currently a UNC student, but first, I was an Ames graduate, and this is always going to be home for me. We worked with many agencies across campus, along with the three Ames Veterans Clubs, student government, and SACE staff members, and Ames administration. Almost 100 votes were collected, and these are our two finalists. The first one you see has our mascot, Arti de Arvark. The second is our standard Ames logo, that we carry on our t-shirts very proudly. Pending any questions, we'd like your opinion on which one that you like the best.
Are you going to give us a ballot to vote on?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Jennifer, thank you. Jennifer is, come over here, so I can see you. She's sporting our 2018, 2019 Vest Club t-shirt. Show them the back.
Yes.
Anyway, Jennifer's a humble person. She won't tell you how much work that she put into this effort last year as she led the group that brought us here today. So, I don't have, we don't have socks for you, but we do have some voting cards. It's not too terribly difficult, but you do have to make a decision, so I'm going to pass these out to you, and then you choose the one you like, and I'll collect those up, and we'll count them right in front of the group.
We're going to have discussion?
Yeah, each have your own vote.
What's that?
You each have your own vote on-
No discussion?
No discussion.
And we don't get to advocate for our choice? Gee.
Oh my goodness.
Okay. Oh my goodness, the ballots are already marked, what is this?
I know.
So we put the one we want in your fishbowl, okay?
Yeah.
Is that what you want them to do?
We could sing the Jeopardy song, but I don't know that you need that much time to decide, so I'm going to come around, collect your vote, and we'll count the ballots.
The one that you, that they want, they put in your fishbowl?
Well, if we do number one, oh, come on. We don't have, we don't hear how they voted, there's no discussion. This is, golly. Come on, you know I like to discuss these.
Yes, we do, Mark.
Oh, we could have a tie, because there were four of us.
Oh yeah, we're good. Yeah, you could break it.
Trustee O'Hara's not here, so we'll hope-
Oh, it could be a tie, that's true. I might have the deciding vote here.
One vote for Arti.
Yay!
Two votes for Arti.
Uh-oh.
One vote for non-Arti.
Uh-oh.
And a third vote for Arti.
Yay!
Thank you very much.
That was gun to your edge.
So I have a question, of course.
What was the-
What is the timeline, once obviously you've got the board's vote on which flag to proceed with, what is your timeline for getting those flags printed and hung, or a couple weeks? Do you know if we'll be able to have flags available maybe in our bookstore for purchase? So maybe we can, I see UNC flags on people's homes. I'm thinking we might want Ames flags on people's homes.
Yeah, I got a flagpole.
I got a flagpole.
So we'll be able to do that, okay.
What was the vote prior to our final, our final decision? Was there a tally of?
The vote, they selected, they narrowed down to a total of three. Those three were sent to Cabinet. Cabinet narrowed down to two, and the final decision then was for the board to decide.
Now, this isn't going to cost us like $10 million to change all the, all our buttons and labels?
No.
Just the flags, right?
It's just the flags, yes. Thank you all for your participation, and on-the-spot request with voting with no discussion. I recognize that feels a little counterintuitive to you-
Yeah.
-but I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I always like to, actually, this reads better, but that's cute.
Okay.
Okay.
I think I'm up last. So you have in your packets some meetings of note from September. Do you have any questions on any of those? Obviously, it's not all of the meetings I attend, but it's the meetings of note. It's on page 69 of your board packet on Diligent.
What's the Geller Center?
The Geller Center is actually an independent foundation center focused on social justice, and it's located over in Fort Collins. They are looking at expanding their mission to involve and cover northern Colorado, so they're looking at what that would mean, and if there is a potential partnership there for Ames to be part of. So that's my involvement in that at this point in time. I might also mention that Dr. Andy Feinstein, who is the incoming UNC president, he and I have had our initial meetings. He had an opportunity to tour the Greeley Campus, was very impressed and also very excited about what we can do together. And we have also reinstated between Dr. Feinstein, myself, and Dr. Pilch, who's the superintendent of Greeley District 6, our regular meetings. So he actually hosted that first, which was fabulous, and a great way to get to know one another and move forward, and I'll be hosting the next one in November, and then Deirdre will host the third. So those are some things that we've started together. And I will say, initial impressions are, he's very eager to work with the community colleges, not just Ames, but all community colleges that are feeder schools certainly into UNC, and so I think we have a good partner in his leadership.
And did you say that's once a month? Is that, you mean, you meet every month?
No, we're going to, just regularly. Whatever that means, yep. Any other questions on the meetings of note? Okay, moving forward, you have the employee report with regard to new hires. Are there supervisors in the audience with new employees that would like to introduce? Okay, at first-
I'd like to ask that first, because-
You're going to have to really shout, because it's very hard to hear you-
Okay, I'm requesting a first, because Rebecca is covering the office here, and so she's, this is Rebecca Rolson, she is the new enrollment advisor for the Winter Campus, and I just opened my notes, and I'm going to introduce her. And she comes to us from the South Bronx, from Metro College of New York. She's originally from Kansas and received her master's degree in counseling, student development, counseling and student development with an emphasis in higher education administration from KSU. She enjoys taking her dogs to the dog park, and is really excited to be back in Colorado, and especially at the Winter Campus.
Fantastic. Welcome. Thank you. Nancy, as I understand-
Hi, John Chan. John has been at Ames for the last two years as a financial aid advisor and a VA sort of financial, and he was started on September 1st as he is one of the assistant directors in the financial aid office. They share, we do the trio office, and we had an opening, so that was an opportunity for John to pivot to the assistant director position. So he'll now be managing the work study program, satisfactory academic progress, but he's going to continue in his role as the liaison in the financial aid office for the veteran students.
Okay. I saw some people raising their hand, yes, hi.
I'd like to introduce Emily Bartley, she's our newest enrollment advisor on the Greeley Campus. And Emily comes to us from the local school district in the Transleaches Program, the Gear Up Program. She has her bachelor's degree in social welfare and Spanish. She is licensed to teach high school Spanish. She previously to, I already said that, okay. What Emily likes to do in her free time is she enjoys cooking, she likes to watch the Kardashians, she, which obviously that's why we hired her. She likes spending time with her friends, and she likes to garden. And we are so excited to have her.
Okay. Mike?
I'd like to introduce Angela Sarah, I hope that you may recognize Angela, she's one of the facilities about here, and Angela is recently promoted to the ground supervisor. So I wanted to introduce Angela, and that's also our brigger, our volleyball expert.
Yeah.
I'm Melissa Pickle, Director of Academic Advising, and I am very excited to give out some promotions and new additions to the academic advising team. First, we have Sarah Mitchell. Sarah has actually started an event at Ames since 2007, the first is to honor our sending, and then she transferred to UC, completed her degree in the Bachelor of Science in her school, but loved higher ed, so came back to us. And has been an advisor with us since 2013, and in August, she will be seeing our advisors. Please, thank you.
Okay.
I have a new addition, A, who's all playable, she's on our pre-graduated license. She's a pregraduate and undergraduate degrees, and she's in University of Connecticut, with a secondary degree in human development, and higher ed, she's a nurse, and she's a capable educator. I also have another teammate who is not with us today, she's a student named Frances Robatia, of Trenton, and of course, she was hired here at Ames. She's a graduate of the University of the Hurace St. Woods. Her name is Erica Popova, and she has degrees in social work and administration, and hired to teach as well. And then Sarah would like to introduce our last new additions.
So, this is John, Sarah Mitchell, and this is Sarah Roberts, who's a former advisor to this school at Ames. She's an advisor as well at the academic advisory department, and Sarah, who's in the campus. Sarah comes to us, who has experience in all kinds of early colleges as well, and hopes that we're experienced and talk, and we're very excited to have her as part of my team. So, yeah.
Timothy, I probably need to introduce you, even though I already did. So, Timothy, please stand up. Our new vice president for community and college relations, Timothy Ullman, who's coming to us from Alabama and who's been very busy in front of the television watching football. Welcome, we're very glad you're here. Thank you, Timothy. Any other supervisor with a new employee that I might have missed? No? Okay. That concludes the president's report. Chair Peterson, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. B. Next on our agenda is information items, and start off with Board Priority B, and that is continue to advocate, advocate for Ames Community College locally, statewide, and nationally. A member of that committee who's here is Lyle Lotziger. Can you give us an update on what's going on?
Well, we, we had a meeting. Dr. Jean O'Hara had to attend by phone, but it was a good meeting. We're going to start getting out and meeting with our various representatives on behalf of Ames College, and I don't know where that's going to go, but it's going to be positive. We're going to make sure of that, and we're going to be out there looking out for Ames' interests on various legislation that may come down the pike. So, I'm excited to get started, very excited. I've got several appointments made already with people, and I don't know where Jean is with that.
And page 71, that gives you the recommendations.
I don't see 71.
Oh.
So, just to read what's in front of me rather than ad lib, like I do so often. Phase one of advocating for Ames locally, statewide, nationally. There's a relationship map. I don't think it's up there. No, it's not. But we do have a map that will outline the relationships between legislators and board of trustees members. One of our goals is to have a one-on-one coffee with Weld and Laramore County Commissioners, one of those I've already started working on. And then annual assessment of the ACCT National Legislative Summit attendance. Phase two will attend Saturday morning legislative town hall meetings for visibility and understanding of legislative issues. And phase three will host legislative breakfast, and that will start in September or October of 2019. So, that's the official plan.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, there, trustee. I was saying, I should have done this earlier, but trustee O'Hara, excuse me, came up with a sort of an emergency meeting, I guess, that conflicted with, with this meeting, so he couldn't be here. I just want everybody to know, it's not that he didn't just show up, but he did have a conflict. We also tried to set up through our crack staff carrier to get him on a speakerphone so he could participate in the meeting, and it just couldn't be done.
Or we just ask.
As quickly, as quickly as necessary in this, in this building or in this room, I guess, actually. So, I should have said that earlier, but I just want everybody to know that he's not here because he simply could not make it because of a work conflict.
He's retiring also this month.
No, that's correct. So, he maybe will not have these emergency meetings now.
Be a little bit more available.
Right, for sure. So, in his hospital that he heads up just went through a takeover or come...
A merger.
A merger.
Acquisition possibly.
Yeah, so he's been up to his ears and trying to get things straightened out and ready to go. Okay.
I think, Dr. Peterson, one more thing. I think it might be important to, just among the board here, to communicate if any of us have any particularly special relationships or comfortable relationships with any of our legislators, that they indicate that, so certainly we can make those arrangements. I think sometimes that, that is very advantageous in going forward. So, we can either discuss it here, or we can let myself or Jean know, or let you know, Dr. Peterson, and that might help in establishing some of those meetings.
Sure.
And, you know, Dr. B has been very good at putting together talking points for us. If you have those juicy tidbits, if you could feed her away, because those always are helpful when you have a statistic that just is overwhelming or remarkable, we should know about that, so if we can burn it into our memory banks, it helps us make a better presentation for the college, especially what we're, how we're reaching into our communities and not only our student population base is being diverse, but the type of career potentials that we develop, which are as equally diverse, in my opinion. And that's, 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 those are, those are, send them up to food chain, please.
And I do have a question.
Good point. Excuse me.
I have a question. So, I have a question for the board members. This on page 71 is a list of the subcommittee recommendations to the board, the phase one, phase two, phase three, and I just, in order to assist Tonette in, Tonette Salazar, who was our lobbyist, so in order to assist her so she can assist us in the best way possible, just I wanted to know from you all if you're comfortable with these recommendations, if there are members of the board who may choose to spend their time elsewhere, which is fine. I know when we talked about some of this in our June retreat, we mentioned that some folks may want to jump into this priority, where other folks may want to spend their time and energy in another priority. So, it's just would be helpful for us to know if you're supporting this, these recommendations, if you're available to be tapped into for some of these recommendations. So, I'm just throwing it out.
Not that we can have any meeting or discussion while we're at the ACCT, but, you know, it's just, there might be some avenues that, just what you talked about. We, I don't think we divvied this up, have we?
No.
No, this, this is just recommendations from the subcommittee top level right now, and then as we get closer to legislative session, when and if, as Lyle mentioned, he's already started meeting with his corresponding county commissioners for coffee, et cetera.
Sure.
So...
Yeah, I'm like John Cook. I know John very well, and so I can...
So, you could just reach out and have coffee?
I could reach out to him, and I know Perry Buck, too, for that matter.
Okay. So, you're supportive of these recommendations?
Oh, yeah.
And willing to participate?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay. I know you are.
Steve Moreno. You know Sean better than me.
Yeah, I could...
Yeah, I'd be happy to meet with Sean Conway.
You know Steve, too, for that.
Yeah, Michael Teener.
You're my friend, and you got all those, well, you know, right?
Rob Woodward, who's in LPR with Rob. Hugh McKean, I've worked a lot with Hugh McKean, Perry Buck.
I'm connected with Rob Cassidy.
So, yes.
So, maybe when we are in New York for our ACCT, we could do the relationship mapping at that time. Are, Ray and Carol, are you comfortable with the recommendations that are being presented?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I, you know, we started out with, well, what the heck does that mean? And I think Lyle and Jean have done a good job of, well, this is what we think it means. And I think we, we can all just fit into this as necessary and appropriate or whatever, so that we're not divvying up or assigning anything, but...
Thank you.
Any further discussion or comment on... Okay, item number nine, action items, and there are no action items for this, for this So, comments from the board members. I'll start, and I just want to tag on to Dr. Ullman's comments about the dedication of the mural that's on the east wall. Is that right? Yeah, it's east wall of the, good grief, now I can't remember the name.
Rodarte.
Rodarte.
Rodarte Community Center. It was a wonderful experience, and as I told Carol as we were leaving, I kept thinking, well, I, what am I going for? Well, I don't know whether I want to do this. And when I left, I thought, man, I'm glad I did this. It was very, very good. The artist, Armando, spent, gosh, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes maybe outlining and telling us how he did it, why he did it, what it means, and, and just was, was very interesting. The second part of that was, and I would encourage anybody to tour that facility. That was another part of what we did in this dedication, and it is an impressive facility and staff, and they really are, it's Ames proud. I mean, it's a wonderful community connection, and there's a great deal of, of good going on there. A lot of it's supported by Ames Community College, and I, I just thought that was great.
To add to that, they do an after-school kind of work session for the, for the students. There's about, what, 70, 70 students? Is that what they said?
Yeah.
That they, they get them a little snack, and then they feed them dinner, and then they also get them into their homework. So, they have tutors that are integrated, and, which was coincidental, I was listening to my wife yesterday. We had my first cousins and second cousins up from, actually, Deirdre's best, one of her good friends, Jackie Weber, run the math department at Boulder. She's on sabbatical. But long to short, Anita was talking about, they have that need as well at the shelter, and the biggest challenge is it's 6:30 to 8:30, trying to help, help some of the children with some of their studies, giving them a little extra tutelage if their parents are at work or can't be there. So, if you have any volunteers that have those skill sets that could lend, I'm sure the Rodarte would be interested in some volunteers, as well as the Vlade Lupe, so, just, it was kind of coincidental. It was a great, great event. I dressed up a little bit better, mommy a little worse than this.
Well, you had a coat on, too.
Well, I had something that was like four times the size of me, but needless to say, that was a great, this meeting was a super meeting. Last meeting was a great meeting. You guys, you're wonderful. You deserve every bit of that extra $12 million. And aren't you glad I stalled it out to get it? Thanks, Chuck.
Hi, Carol. Lyle, any comments?
Yeah, a couple of, of events in addition to the mural and the balloon launch, which was awesome, if cold. I attended convocation day. I think I only missed one since I've been on the board, and it's always an impressive event. I mean, the, the learning is always really tremendous there. I also attended the age to, human-to-human Immigration 101 class, and I just have to say again, my congratulations to the college for putting on programs like that, that are controversial can be, that are really well-done, good information, just, I think it's a real credit to the institution that we do that and publicize them that they're, that they're public events. So, thank you again, and I'm hoping to be at the next one. I want to thank the Ames people who were at Trapper Day in, in Fort Leptin, including somebody's daughter who got kind of roped into doing that perhaps because her, because her mother is the dean of students. And I walked up to that booth, and, and it's, well, hello, trustee Ruckel, and I'm like, what? I mean, yeah, I had an Ames hat on, but no other idea. Yeah, my mother said to look out for you, so, okay. But, but we had a booth, we had a float. I mean, the Ames presence, as always, was wonderful there, and so my thanks to everybody who was involved in that. It's always good for the community to have us involved in a wonderful parade and, and day like that.
Okay.
Well, another great meeting, and thanks for the hat. It's great. A little more serious note on my part, I guess, without going into detail, in 1971, I came back from Vietnam and started Ames Community College. I can't tell you what that meant to me in getting my head wrapped around things and getting my life back on track. Fast forward X number of years, I'm not going to say how many, but it's been a lot, and I've been associated with Ames College almost continuously in one way or another since then, and I'm proud to be so. But Christine's story today epitomizes what Ames Community College was then, has been, and it continues to be today. So, thank you and congratulations to all of you out there who continue the Ames tradition and, and assure that Ames Community College turns out those kinds of students and has that kind of positive effect on people's lives. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Now, assessment of the board meetings. Any comments there? How'd we do? Did we get enough information? Are we really focused on strategies? And I would say, yes, we are. I think we're really very much focused, and I think that's great. We really have a roadmap and a guide as to where we're going, and I think it works out very well. Lots of information, too, which I appreciate, so... Anybody else want to comment? We're at the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ah, thank you, Lyle. Thank you, Carol. Motion has been made. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, no. The meeting is adjourned.